Oh, thank you. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of the Town of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. It is May 28, 2025, and I would like to call the meeting to order. And the call, please, let's start with Commissioner Redkay. Rachel Weaver here.
Here.
Okay.
Mary Sue Graceman, present.
Christopher Smith, present.
Kelly Hahn, present.
Thank you. Notice that we will note that all commissioners are present. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin. Okay, I'd like to ask for an approval of the minutes of the April, I'm sorry, approval of the May 28 Planning Commission Agenda.
The agenda.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number four, approval of the minutes of the April 23, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? To approve?
I can do.
Any comments, questions? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number five, we have a public comment to read. I don't see anybody in the audience, but let me go ahead and read the public comment that we had, and we do appreciate anybody who does send us emails or come into our meeting, actually, and share with us what you're thinking about our current agenda items. This is "Good Evening. I am the owner of a vacant building, and one day I would like to do a bay/crab mural on the outside wall next to the empty lot. What are the rules for basic art on the wall? Right now, the wall is boring white. What are your thoughts?" Thank you, Peter. And then down below, we are recommending that we, you know, have you come in and offer some ideas as well about this. Of course, to address this, you would probably want to talk to Ms. Sarah Franklin, our planner, so come on in and please talk to her about it. These are, this would be something you probably would find the answer to in our code, but maybe not, you never know. So you'd have to probably ask her for specifics, but thank you for writing in and asking your question. Okay. Now, we're going to go on to number six, which is new business. We have the Critical Area Commission Letter, and I would like to ask our Planning and Zoning Planner, Ms. Sarah Franklin, to give us a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. So, we went through, we got our critical area overlay passed through council, and then it went to the Critical Area Commission. They were pleased with it as well. However, the time that it took us to go through all of that, state law changed. And so there are some new regulations that have to be included in our critical area ordinance that didn't need to be included when we were adopting it. And so they've gone ahead and provided us with standard language that will include those elements, and mostly have to do with resiliency to climate change and equity with relation to growth allocations. So that's the largest part of the changes. You'll also see the change that just got passed through by council last week or the week before is requested in here, but now that's done, so don't have to worry about that one. And I think that's pretty much it. I don't remember there being anything else. If you guys have any questions?
Yes.
Am I correct that even if ours, our documentation had been more timely, would not it still have needed to be amended?
Oh, yeah. So this happened to lots of people who were adopt, if you were adopting your regulations in the, like, fall this year, this is, everyone's getting this. So it has nothing to do with our timeline, it just is timing, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Uh, any other, the only question I had was on, well, of course, you sort of answered a little bit of it, and that's about the growth allocation, number two. First of all, of course, the growth allocation, which is now 100 acres, that's just been reduced because that's what's left, is 100 acres, obviously, because they have that crossed out. If you notice, on number two, 290-18, growth allocation, number A, I'm going down to what our original growth allocation was, 141, and now they have 100.
Yeah, there's, we've been kind of going back and forth on the growth allocations, and I guess in the end, it was, we had the wrong numbers.
Oh, yeah.
But, but it turns out we have more growth allocation than we thought we did, so it works out.
So the town's growth allocation remaining as of date of adoption of this ordinance is 68.37 acres from 50, okay, yeah, it is a little, this is a little confusing, is why I'm asking.
Yeah, that was calc, the calculations that were done originally, when the critical area staff turned over, they looked at the calculations and went back and looked through everything. Whatever this, our ordinance had started out with and had been agreed on with Critical Area Commission was actually incorrect. So staff corrected it. And the reason I didn't think it was a big thing to fuss over is it turns out we wind up with more
Right.
allocation
Right.
than before, so felt like that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or, you know, concerns about what they're reading here? As you can see, the cross doubts, of course, are what they're admitting, and then the underline is what they're adding, so there's actually not too bad, it's not not a lot. Okay, I don't see any more questions or issues. Do I have a motion to, actually, you have a resolution here, too, don't you?
Yes, you can send it over to council.
Okay, so basically, I need an approval to, approval of this critical area, the Critical Area Commission Letter and the resolution, and I need the approval to transmit to the Town Council as well. So I actually can just be one big motion is all I need. So who can give me that motion? Can anybody do that, or should I? Okay, I will move. Okay, I will move that we approve the Critical Area Commission Letter and Resolution, and also to transmit it to the Town Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay, I'll, okay, well, that's whatever. And any questions or issues? Okay, then, all in favor, aye. Opposed? Okay, good. Next one is the annual report of the Planning Commission. Again, staff report, please.
Yes, so every year, you all file a report with Maryland Department of Planning. It is, you know, how many units have been developed in the town. It also asks you questions about where you are with relation to the comprehensive plan, what kind of other planning activities you have going on, and if there's anything in particular that the Planning Commission would be looking for assistance with from MDP. And I included in that coastal resiliency and climate change study implementation, because I know that's our next big topic to tackle. If you guys have more, we can add it.
Yes.
I should agree.
Maybe I missed it, but under number five, the box that was checked was no. And then in the box below, there's a box that checked sensitive area. Is that, it seemed inconsistent to me that...
Yeah, you're right, that's, the sensitive areas is kind of, is incorrect, because there's really not any, the, I guess, I guess we, it's the critical area regulations.
I wasn't sure, okay.
Yeah, maybe I should say yes there, I'm just, it's, it's a little funny. I will update that.
Okay. Just makes more internal consistency, for me, anyway. Thank you.
Any other questions or issues about this report? I see none. Will anybody make a motion to amend and approve? Okay, seeing nobody, I will go ahead and make the motion to amend with the number five reading yes, and approve to transmit to the Town Council.
Second.
And do we have any questions or issues? Okay, all in favor, aye. Okay, now, we move on to signage. Good, we've got a lot to do here, so we have to get to household hands at some point here, so I want to give us some time. Okay, let's go into our packet of the draft. And if we go to the definitions, which is B, does anybody have any issues with any of these definitions? And do you want to add any or subtract any? Yes, Commissioner Graceman?
I could be just reading it wrong, but alteration, it says a change in the size or shape of an existing sign, copy, or color, which sounds like a definition of alteration, then says is not an alteration. And I was just a little confused, and maybe not, that just hit me.
You will receive an answer from our wonderful
Bring it up for you.
Professional here.
Sorry, that's the sign, that the screen was not connected, I apologize. And so we're on alteration.
Yes.
I think it's the changing, the second sentence has to be capitalized.
That's true.
Yes, okay, that makes sense.
So, right, so it's change in the size, the size, the copy or color is not, oh, this is, this is an interesting
Not the very definition of alteration.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think this might be better, because this is talking about what is not an alteration, rather than what is an alteration. So maybe it should be saying any change to a sign with the, the exception of, size or shape, I think, is, the size or shape is an alteration, but the copy and color is not. No, it says that, it's just that, I got it. It was the capitalization on everything. Yes. So.
Okay, what, what did we, okay, I'm sorry, I'm having a little squinty in, okay, so copy or change? Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you, I see, I see. Got it.
This could probably be organized better. Six, six, sign. I don't know why these aren't just all, we just put these, we just need more commas, right?
When you mean, when you say copy, what do you mean?
That's the text. Yeah. We can say text.
You've watched Too Many Mad Men.
Yeah, we probably should say text.
Changing the text color or color of, or changing text color or replacing a signed face panel is not an alteration. There we go, yeah.
Should be changing the text, comma, color, comma, or replacing. Thank you.
I need to make this bigger, can everyone see it?
We would appreciate that.
Okay. Do you want to make the first sentence a true sentence and put a verb in there? Or is it a change in the shape or a change, okay, I guess the change is the verb, but instead of the alteration, well, but then you go right into another sentence, so it looks kind of, oh, alteration is a change, and, okay, there you go.
Yeah, there we go.
The text color or replacing a sign face, not an alteration.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had, I heard a commissioner say it's still confusing, and that is confusing, because why wouldn't it be an alteration if you're changing the text color or replacing a sign face? Wouldn't that still be an alteration?
I guess it doesn't require
A new permit, because it's like the same size
Right.
and shape.
Maybe it should say
But it says in size or shape.
Changing the content. That's what it is, it's content versus
Yeah, if you're changing the content in the sign, that's
Why don't we use the word content?
I don't know, just
How about if we just make it simple?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I've heard, I've heard this lawyer tell me that he likes fewer words.
No, he's what?
Fewer words gives you fewer chances to misinterpret.
True. Yeah.
So, do we want to say changing the content is not considered an alteration, because it truly is an alteration?
True.
So you want to say is not considered an alter, isn't
Or for the purposes of the section.
Yeah, right, for the purpose, yeah, exactly, okay.
There's too many words, sorry. Mr. Peter Graceman, for bringing this
We have only gotten to the As.
Yeah, that's too much.
But I understand, because technically
Oh, my gosh. Okay, now, where are we on alteration? Alteration is a change in the size or shape of an existing sign. Change in the content is not considered an alteration. Good, okay, perfect. Okay, so then, the next question is, before alteration, do we want to have a definition of an abandoned sign?
Ooh.
Because I know that St. Michael's has that, and they have abandoned or dilapidated sign, but they have a whole definition in here. I just thought maybe we wanted to include, because I don't think we have that, it's not in
No, it kind of comes into the violation or the
But I know that's a confusing issue to people. Well, it's not really abandoned, because blah, 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 you know, they're gonna, people can dispute what abandoned really means.
Question, though, to all, does it make sense to define it until we've seen how we're using it in code later?
But isn't the purpose of definitions so that when you read the code later
Later, that
You've given, given context.
It's, I mean, it gives guidance, because what, in the violations and enforcement sections, talking about how the Public Works Administrator can determine that a sign is unsafe, or, and there's also something about, once the business is no longer there, then the sign has to be removed in a certain number of days.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
So, I don't know if the definition would need to include all of that, or if the definition
You know, I just want to make sure that they're talking to each other, I guess.
Well, and that you can't say it's not abandoned, because it doesn't meet the definition of abandoned, even though it's in violation of other parts of the chapter.
Should I read what St. Michael's has, oh, I'm sorry, this is Mount Airy, I've got about six different towns here. Mount Airy has abandoned or dilapidated. Any sign which has been expressly abandoned by its owner is out of date on its face and/or is in poor condition. E example, has faded or missing lettering, has fallen down, become unattached, or been significantly leaning without correction for two or more months, has had its message obscured by vegetation, is substantially damaged, and/or is otherwise not in condition to be seen in the normal course.
I couldn't type that out, but
That's pretty, that's pretty specific, and I think that gives you a lot to go on if you have issues with a sign that is, has got a problem. So do you want us to, does anybody have a problem with us including something like that, or what do you think? Commissioner Weaver?
Where is it used in the abandoned, used in?
It would probably be down in our violations section, wouldn't it, or no?
Yeah, we would probably say something like, or otherwise deemed abandoned, we could put it in there.
I don't think we have it in there right now, but I think we need to put it in there, because that's a big deal. Okay, does anybody have any problems with that definition I just read? Can we just kind of steal it?
I like it, I think it makes everything very, very clear.
It is
Expansive.
Just tell me, that's Mount Airy?
It's Mount Airy.
Okay, I'll, I'll insert it later.
Mount Airy, I see.
Definitely in the state.
No, we don't have it.
No, I'm sorry, it's one of my many towns I have on my desk, here. And then, okay, so then we're at animated, I'm sorry, the next one is animated.
It doesn't say Mount Airy.
What? I know what I mean, though, we're good. That'll help me do what I need to do.
Okay, animated sign, any sign that uses movement or change of lighting, depict action or create a special effect, movement or scene. The question is
Have to find over here in the section on electronic sign.
Um, actually, animated can also be, have you ever seen those signs where you have the clock hands moving around, you actually have physical things that move? Is that animated? I mean, I've seen those signs, too, where you have the clock hands that go backwards, and it's a clock, it's a watchmaker, silly things like that. Have you ever seen those signs? I've seen them, where there actually are animated signs.
You're not kidding.
Sure we have. It can, it can be either a physically animated sign, or it could be a digital
It's, it's movement or change of lighting.
Yeah. But we want that definition, so that when somebody goes back to look in inside our text, they understand it, right?
Is an animated sign allowed or not allowed?
Well, you have to read the rest of it to know.
This is just a set of definitions.
Are not addressed in, in what we have. I would throw out all but about five, and leave the rest, unless, unless they're directly addressed in the
Yeah, I think when we talked about them initially, we said, let's leave them all here, and when we get done, we'll pull out anything that we don't reference.
Okay, we'll put a question mark, and just see if we want to get back to that. Okay, any, any other As? No, we're on to the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But I think what Commissioner Brown is saying, do we have to go through point by point on all of them if we're not necessarily needing to include all of them? Is that correct? Commissioner Brown, like, so which ones, you know, for the sake of our own time and moving it forward, which ones do we cover? Let's work on those definitions, and like, if we're like, yeah, well, there's really no need to talk about a balloon sign specifically, do we have?
So I had them at the end, kind of for that reason, but I know you guys wanted them at the beginning, so I moved them to the beginning. But yes, it will, I think, because as we get into, we were talking about temporary signs and what's allowed with a permit, what's not allowed with a permit, are we going to add animated signs, balloon signs, banner signs to that list? We haven't really gotten there yet.
There's, there's that. Plus, also, we're catching mistakes like what we caught with the first one, you know, things that don't read correctly or are confusing. So I think, you know, I know this seems a little wordy and tedious, but I think when we submit an ordinance to the Town Council, we want to have it as tight as we can get it, in my opinion.
And sometimes I think it's, things get kind of, I've not really seen sausage being made, but you know, it's sort of what goes on behind the scenes, you have to kind of move pieces around to understand the totality before then you can really start winnowing it down. And I understand what you're saying in other words.
Okay.
Yes. Commissioner Hahn, do you have a question?
Yes, we have 51 definitions. How many of those definitions are used in the regulation?
Well, I haven't seen number eight. I, you know, I don't remember number eight, but then again, number eight is possibly something, oh, I'm sorry, I, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, number, why do you have a different number than I have?
Because she just changed the one to add a
Sorry, I'm talking about changeable copy sign.
Okay, that's No, because I added the abandoned sign, so my numbers are different.
Okay, yeah. So I'm talking about a changeable copy sign, which is apple after canopy sign. I would think all these other ones, we have seen, I have seen them in our balloon signs. A lot of people are actually prohibiting balloon signs, because they're tethered and they're not always safe in wind, et cetera. I don't know, do we prohibit them or not?
Can't be above the height of the building. That's what we say.
Right.
It has to be so of a size limitation. I don't see where balloon signs really fit into what we've written. We can include it, but it's not there now.
We refer to balloons somewhere.
Huh?
We refer to them somewhere later on.
Yeah, in the definitions.
And that's all
Oh, no, there was a hot air balloon sign, but I think we removed it.
I know that one time we had, we had a balloon, but the problem is, is there's always, there are always people that want to have balloons of some sort, and the question is, do we want to identify what a balloon sign is?
Do we want to identify whether it's allowed or not?
Well, and we should, we probably need to do that. A lot of the towns have, as I say, prohibited them, but again, I don't, you know, it's not something that I'm wedded to one way or the other.
Would it be, would it be better to start working on the regulation, and then if we reference one of the definitions, then we highlight it that we know, and we
It's there.
We look at it then, and we look at that definition, and then those that are not highlighted, that we didn't work on, we decide whether we want to keep them or not. Because 51 definitions, it's going to take us a couple meetings to go through them.
And that some of them may not be relevant.
Well, and in fact, if you take a look, there are, I mean, all of these, as I have looked, have been through, you know, have been in here one way or the other, but if you want, let's go ahead and move off of this, then, and move on to temporary signage, which is something that we really do need to work on. And temporary signage, in my opinion, is what towns have the most challenge trying to make sure that it's under control, because that's where you see a lot of the weekenders bringing their signs out, you see a lot of abuse and misuse of the temporary, temporary signage regulations. So if we go to, well, of course, my page is probably different than your page, but I have a page 16 is where, or 15 is where my temporary signage starts. I don't know, I guess we're all different, so I shouldn't even ask. Does everybody know where we are on temporary signage?
I have it on 12.
As do I.
The draft, okay, I'm sorry, it should be on page 12 now.
It's a whole other word.
These are all, these are all
I have a table
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
And you can search very easily.
Yeah, we've got some that are not really the same, I think, probably. Oh, yours is, now we're all different here.
Do you want my paper version here?
Since I don't I have another one. We always knew that. Oh, here you go, this might, this might be a little bit more. Okay, so, so let's go to D. I know the question I asked you all was to think about temporary signage, do we want to permit any, or do we want to keep them with, you know, not needing a permit? So we have to think about that as we're reading through here. Now, the one thing that we don't do under general regulations, at least that I see, is we don't is we don't identify a certain time period. Like, no more than 30 days, more than 30 days is considered, you know, needs a permit and it's not temporary. Do we want to add, it should be 30 consecutive days? Do we want to add longer, shorter? Do we not want to add the amount of days? And if you want to go through, she has under, or not she, but the, the draft has under general regulations, of course, that they should be well-maintained, of course, that B, comply, comply with all the regulations, et cetera, C, the area design and what it should have on it as far as the texts, and then, then how you compute the, the, the size. So, in looking at one, I think in one, we probably should have the fact that temporary means temporary, you know, that it's a, a time-limited situation. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
So what does everybody think as far as time? A lot of towns do 30, some do before the holidays, they add an extra month, it varies. So I, I just want to know what you all think about how this town should look at temporary.
I think whatever we choose, like whatever date you choose, if, I mean, I'm not saying that there couldn't be like a, you know, like an extension, like possibly, like if it goes beyond whatever set date that we allow to be able to, if, 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 if whatever does, but I think 30 days is, is a, is a good amount of time for.
I would maybe, to me, it seems easier than having like special holiday rules and not holiday rules, and I feel like lots of people, and since holiday and seasonal decorations are covered in it, I don't know, it seems like maybe going up to 45 days so that you cover the whole holiday period without anybody being in violation a little more easily. Because truly, those are going to be up, I mean, they're going to be up on town hall for two months. You know what I mean? Like, so if we, so we might want it to be closer to 60 days, because if you're putting it up before Thanksgiving and you're not taking it down till one of the first weeks of January, you're at six weeks easily, and some people, anyhow. I think, I think 60 days, but I don't, I think it shouldn't, I think it should be 60 days of the year, and it doesn't matter whether or not they're consecutive, since there are some places that light theirs up and then take it down.
And it just makes it easier if you have a broad.
Yeah.
Amount of time, as opposed to categorizing it.
For me, it just feels like then you're not making two different sets of things and think, like, just make it so it holds, holds holiday and then go from there.
Yeah.
Personally.
And that's for all temporary signs.
It seems to me it's just easier, I mean, I, there are some temporary signs, I know we wouldn't necessarily want up for two months, but we also.
But then, would that also include like the real estate signs? Because that's, aren't they? And then you don't want those up for.
Well, houses and stuff. Yes, go ahead.
So, I'm typing as you're talking, so the period for displaying a temporary sign shall be no more than however many days, unless a more limited period is specified within this ordinance. So that covers your real estate signs.
Thank you.
So what, how many days would we want to go for? Do we want to go for 45 or 30?
But I also understand that, let's say for holiday decorations and sales and things like that, there's so much time involved installing.
Yeah.
That, I'm not sure that between 45 and 60, I, I kind of leaning towards the 60.
I mean, that is like how, like I said, that's how long the town has up.
Their lights.
Their stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would seem.
It doesn't seem, I, I would hate to enforce something, even if we were like, got a permit to keep it longer, but then we're telling other people that they can't. That doesn't.
I, I agree with that, we want to be.
Yeah.
Even.
Oh, it would be 60 consecutive days.
60, I think it should be 60 total days in a year, right?
Well, that's a problem, your problem is.
Who's going to enforce that?
Compliance and also just trying to code-enforce that situation. Ms. Franklin, what do you think?
I think if you just say 60 days, if you have someone who starts like putting it up for 60 days and taking it down for three and putting it, then you can enforce it, right? But generally, you're, you have the, you have the leeway to enforce someone who's sort of abusing it.
Where's that leeway written?
That's why I think it should say 60 calendar days, not just 60 consecutive days, because then they could break it up and then come back in, like, if you've done it, if you've put up that's, because, I mean, I know that there are some places that they've had issues, you know, those like big plastic skeletons that like people put up, and like, that's been like a big thing in some communities, because then people are like, "Well, I changed it for a different holiday," or "I take it down for a little bit and put it back up," and like, so is that what? I mean, I don't.
So should it say the time period for displaying a, each temporary sign shall be no more than 60 calendar days in a year?
Except for anything that's.
Unless, yeah.
Well, real estate signs are part of the, these temporary signs we're talking about.
But there's this.
So you have a house that doesn't sell for two months, you have to take the sign down?
Well, they are saying that there's going to be, unless, oh, a less or more limited, but you're right, what do you do if you've got a, is the real estate sign, though, they can keep those up.
I feel like it has to do with.
They have to get a permit.
Actually, instead of saying, let me go back to where.
That's like. Then, then we can just modify what it says on the real estate and just say until it sells.
Unless a different time period.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, you change that part of it.
Because you're right, there's two different pieces to the real estate signs.
Ready to go and modify the real estate one as well.
I think the real estate one is accurate, but let's find it.
Because in the definition, it says any sign that is intended to be displayed for no more than is permitted by regulation.
Yeah.
So that means depending on what sign it is, it follows that regulation.
Okay, so we've kind of got the idea that now for temporary, we need time, we got that. And if we go to number two, I think number one then, generally for everybody looks okay now that we've got the time period in there, is there anything else in general regulations under temporary signs that we need to include or change?
Sale sign.
Well, so wouldn't a sale sign be considered one of the 60-day one, I mean, how, how do you want to be specific on that? What do you mean by that? You mean like a, like a store wants to do?
We talk, we talk about other kinds of signs, graphic signs, government signs, holiday and seasonal decorations, large flags, directional signs, signs advertising changes in schedule of events, directing patient, patrons, members or audience to a temporary exhibit, sandwich, real estate sign, temporary signs announcing a campaign, drive or event of a civic, philanthropic, educational religious organization.
You want to add a commercial, you want to add a commercial promotion, a promotional commercial type sign?
Yeah.
You want to add something like that? And which they do have in some of these others, yes.
Question though, I mean, this is something I had kind of said last time, and I still, does, doesn't every, wouldn't any sale sign be one of these other types of signs? That's why it seems to me it makes more sense to regulate what the, like, material and what they are versus like thinking about what they're doing.
What their function is.
Yeah, because it's going to be a building sign, or it's going to be a banner sign, or it's going to be one of those other things, like, we don't care if they're saying a sale or a holiday or a.
Oh, which ones?
So, what kind, how are you envisioning it? It would be different depending on how you did it. Are you doing it as a sandwich board? Are you doing it as a, how, like, what sale sign wouldn't be one of these other things?
Well, what sale sign would be one of these?
Well, it would be a sandwich board, or it would be a banner, or it would be a. The, the problem is with, under temporary, we put a lot of functions. The question is, can we just put regulations that fit all signs, temporary and otherwise, get some of the redundancy out of it? Because a lot of it seems redundant, and take the function, except for real, real estate's a function we have to have in there because of its unique nature. But, and direct, but directional signs shouldn't be under temporary. Directional signs, are they under temporary for some reason?
Well, they're, so, sort of just like backup, I rearranged the ordinance for our discussion.
Yeah.
So that means things are in multiple places.
Right.
So, they're, they're in temporary and they're in permanent.
And they're in permanent.
Because you might be having a yard sale, and then you're sticking those.
Oh, okay, that would be considered direct. I got it. Like an arrow or something, I guess, okay, that's a good point.
But I think that's, the, the point of, and I think we talked about this as well, is should we just say like a list of types of signs that are allowed, instead of what's on them? I think that's the question that Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Weaver are asking.
Yeah.
Is, we're saying you can advertise a schedule of events, you can direct patrons, but if we just said you can have a banner sign, a press board sign of X size, or.
That makes more sense to me.
It does.
Then it doesn't matter what they say, as long as it's not obscene or offensive.
That's what I think too, that's exactly.
Cut out like quite a few of these that we don't have to, like, signs directing patrons, members or audiences, like, that doesn't need to get into that, or like.
Or be considered an event sign. So couldn't you just have the definition be what you use? So in other words, the, you know, you'd have event sign, and that would explain all of the words that, that Rachel just said?
I think there's this question, right, of now that it's reorganized, what happens next to the ordinance, right? And is it, here's a, you know, like you said, like a list of the different types of signs, or do we want to, well, and your, real estate is real estate, right, it's going to be its own.
A separate thing, yeah.
But then you don't have to say an event sign, you don't have to say a sale sign, you don't have to say anything about what's on the sign. You're just regulating the type of sign, and then probably the overall size and height, and maybe number of signs.
All right, so let's, if everybody's in agreement, I think that's the way we should be headed.
Okay.
Try and minimize how many words we're using in here.
Yeah.
Minimize redundancy. I know, I, I showed Ms. Franklin today that like if you go to Annapolis, they just have a list of like 10 things that are exempt, and they're basically using the definitions and just, these are exempt, you're, this, and this, and the, you know, that's just 10 words basically is all it is. So it's real easy once you get the definitions appropriately put in there. So I guess, once we then, it addresses Commissioner Brown's item, issue with the commercial, once we take everything else out, then it's not going to look like commercials being left out.
Right.
Right, does that address your issue sort of? We'll see how it looks when, at the end of the day here. So then the next question is, are you still typing? Do I not want to talk while you're typing?
No, you can keep, you can talk while I type.
So the next question then is, do we want to have permit versus non-permitted use, or just have all of them non-permitted or temporary? You don't have to, I mean, here's one I have to, what's that?
But that was actually my question, I was like, I had a question on this, and that's.
Well, that's what I know, that's what I asked everybody to, to think about, is do we want to permit any of the temporary signs? And we have to keep in mind that we have very limited staff, we have to be kind to our, our commercial and business family here that we have in Chesapeake Beach, so we have to think about that as well, and, but on the other hand, we don't want abuse, so we have to find some kind of compromise. Can we, now, there are some towns, for example, Annapolis, where they don't have any signs that you can have without a permit, they're all permitted signs, temporary and otherwise. And then you've got a whole, you've got four towns that have a long list of temporary signs, so it's, everybody has a different, you know, different way of looking at it. What are you, what are your thoughts about this, in your professional opinion?
I think that you might, where you might want to use a permit, is if you start talking about these balloons or hot air balloons, if you decide you want to bring those back in, that's sort of a bigger sign that might waver, you know, move around, if that's something you want to allow, maybe those are the ones that require a permit. If you don't want to allow them, then this section is unnecessary and just let everything happen.
I, when I was reading about the sandwich, the A-frames, I thought those should be permitted, only because there's so much opportunity to have a safety issue. And a lot of people did permit that, that was a, a big one that they permitted. So if there was anything I would want to permit, it would be that one, but then there were towns that didn't, so it, you know, I'll go with whatever you guys think, but you're talking, you know what I'm talking about with the A-frame, the sandwich, or I won't call it sandwich, but the A-frame sign that you put on a sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if you don't put them in at night, or if the wind blows, you know, you could hurt people, they could fly out into the.
How does permitting change that?
Yeah.
It doesn't.
You would just, if you abuse it or you don't use it correctly, you just lose a permit, you lose the opportunity to have it, it's just a, a way to have somebody focus on what they have to do to protect the use of that, that board, that, you know, sign.
So the only one I really, caveat, the other one, other than Ridgefield Station that uses it sometimes for food trucks, so that it doesn't blow away, is I see it all over town for when they are flushing the pipes.
Right, right. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, that's true. But I like the idea of, of permitting things like balloons and things like that, because that, or not, I don't ca, I mean, I don't care, I'm not sure, I went it one way or the other. You obviously have an issue.
Well, no, I don't, I mean, permitting, of course, gives, because what is it, $30 to $5 or something for a permit? So, you know, from a town in the fiscal, might give some more money to the town, but I don't think that the permit necessarily, it, it, it's not, it, to me, it doesn't really do much.
Doesn't achieve the compliance, or doesn't achieve what your goals are.
Violation fees could.
But it also feels to me, I'm just opposed to having any things that we're not, like, going to actually be enforcing, and I feel like giving ourselves more things to badly enforce is not the ideal, like, and that feels like that's just adding one more layer of like where violation could happen, and I don't think the amount that we're going to bring in is going to exceed the amount that it's going to cost the town and try.
I think that's right.
It would probably cost more to permit them than it would.
That's what I'm saying.
Because if you take into consideration how many people have to touch that paperwork.
Exactly, I don't.
To get that permit approved, and how long that permit's good for.
And all the time that, you know, questions that have to be answered, and just staff time.
Yeah.
Discussing it with some applicant.
We all know I do regulations and, for work, and so if we don't have to have a regulation here for something like this, because I don't see people abusing it when I'm locally.
Yeah.
So right now, I would put this on hold and say we don't permit it unless we see in the future that it's being abused, and then we come back and look at it then.
So, just generally don't have permits with temporary signage? Okay.
And I think we just, and then, because the one thing that seemed to be of concern is balloons, I just don't think they should be allowed. Like, I feel like those should be in the non-permitted, non-permitted.
A lot of people have that in the non-per, in the exempt, exempt, or not exempt, but the prohibited, the prohibited group.
How are you feeling about this?
Well, under, under what we've got right here, I don't know how you get a balloon out of a building.
Have to make a special. Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we don't even have to specify it, because it doesn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be allowed anyway.
It would be the kind of balloons where you have them, like a car lot has them, where they're just enough to flutter and make motion. It would be the kind of balloons where you have them like a car lot has them where they're just enough to flutter and make motion so that you can see where.
Five square feet.
Okay, sarcastic, see if I care. Okay. All right, so we've come to a conclusion about not, not worrying about the permitting of the temporary signs. So if we look down on number two on page 12. Government regulatory signs, do we need to put the government regulatory signs in an ordinance since we know that the government's gonna do what they want anyway, or is that?
You mean at the top?
Under number two where it says.
To be.
Yes. Be or not to be? I don't know, do we just need to have an extra, you know, have that in there?
I think it's.
A.
You can't have someone come back and say, oh, they just do whatever.
Or A, A or B, because you're saying official traffic signs, that means government traffic signs, right? Or what does official mean?
Yeah, government, I would say.
Now in state, yeah.
Well, you're meaning the town of Chesapeake or any government, should we just put, is it official? Should we put in government?
So. I would think that like if HOAs wanted to put in a, they're gonna have. Signs on their private roads too that say stop or. Children crossing or deer, like those signs, those get installed by the HOA. Am I wrong?
For.
On a private road?
For Richfield Station, most of our roads are public except for the townhouse roads. That some of them that haven't been turned over yet.
So I think there's some private roads in town that are. In HOAs. And so they might need to put in official traffic signs. I just don't.
So we don't have to find what official.
I guess, you know, you can't draw your own stop sign and install, but it's, it's an official, I guess installed by whoever.
Upper management.
Whoever owns the road.
In Richfield Station, in our area where you can park, where we do the food trucks, we have signs that basically says you cannot park overnight. This is not for parking overnight. I mean, technically it's a parking spot and not a road, but.
That's an HOA who did that, an HOA did that.
But is it traffic? I, yeah.
You know, this is an interesting point because we have a lot of people who put up their own signs that in front of their houses, that say, don't park here. Don't use this part of the street. And it's. It's, it's a real, you know, it's a city, a city street or a town street, but. Do we need to change official to make it more specific? Do we want to put in, you know, designated HOA slash? I would call an HOA a government entity, but it's not, so I don't know. What specific terminology we could be to be specific. But it doesn't matter, am I getting too crazy here on, on words? I don't know.
I mean, I think, I think it's okay the way it is.
Okay. I'm good with that. I'm good with that. Okay, so when you go to C sub I there, number one, I'm sorry. You have, there shall be no more than X of such signs on each building face. So do we want to? Insert something there or no?
Yes, the reason there's an X here, I believe, is because there was discussion about how many should be allowed. And there wasn't an actual resolution. So I left the X as the placeholder pending a resolution as to how many.
So this is a temporary sign we're talking about without a permit. Do we just want to say, do we want to determine the size of the building face and say no more than? One per size, you know, building that's a face that says blank, blank by, you know, blank, blank, or, I mean, how do we want to identify the? Building face size?
Was this the one that we were talking about with the octagon and the beer signs?
That was one of the things that got brought up, yes.
Because your problem is we don't identify the size of the sign. And the problem, they used to have a whole bunch of signs on one face, I remember at one time. They're, they're now down to one size, one sign per face. But to reduce clutter for temporary signage, do we just want to put one sign? Just to make it easy, since it can otherwise go out of control?
You're saying one sign?
One sign on a face on what, so the octagon has eight.
They beat the system. There'll be a lot more buildings built like that.
Do we just have one, right now they have one sign per face for temporary signs. Actually, I think that's, I don't know if those are permanent or temporary, but anyway. Do we want to have them, allow them to have more than one? To me, if they're small, I mean, maybe two would be fine, but it depends on the size of the sign. And it. Are we dancing here? What are we doing?
I turned my phone totally off, so, no, I did.
Is that your phone?
Yes.
I can see you did a good job of turning it off.
Music.
It's lovely. Okay, so. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make fun of you. So what do you think it'd be, do we want to have a proportion of signage, temporary signage to size of wall?
I think. You're thinking about the octagon and its eight faces, right, but. Any, any building, right, maybe only has one face, and so if you limit it to one, you're actually. Limiting more people. For. In consideration of one specific building. So. I would say. Either tie it to the area or allow more than one sign per face.
Okay, does anybody have any, any, I would, I would just put the word one in there and just let it go and. Probably people won't even read this anyway and do put two or three up there. So I'd just say one.
But that's what I feel like we're avoiding, to me, and like if, what do we want to? Don't say one if we're gonna allow three. I would much rather than say, let's put up three, because if we're doing this.
Well, okay, then you're gonna have to go by size of either the, the building frontage. Because most of the buildings in this town just have a front. A, one face on the front. The octagon is just, we can't even compare it to anything else. So if we just say that everybody has, let's just look at the, the antique building across the street or the, the, you know, where they sell out furniture. He has one face. And so he should have. I know he had, sometimes we'll have temporary signs around there, but. How would you identify?
Windows. Windows is covered.
So you're saying you could have temporary signs in the windows too, so you can do that. Right. So this is where it gets to be complicated. That's why I said, let's make it easy and just do one. I mean, I can't figure out how else to do it. Now, in Mount Airy, if you want to use them, the total area of all attached signs per use or business on the premises shall not exceed. Shall not exceed one square foot per building front foot. So they're measuring the frontage footage. And they're, they're using that as their. Idea of how many, of how many square inches or square feet of signage I can have.
I believe you do that as well. Impermanent sign. Right here.
Well, but then when you use, yeah, see, this is where it gets to be like. A sign that you have that you're permitting is now we're getting a little bit tedious on. Measure everything and, you know, now you're getting to be like a permitted sign.
Right.
A wall sign or a window sign. So I guess the question is, if you're just talking about a temporary, only 60 days or less sign. I don't know, I, I, I think it should be. One, because you also have your. Regular signs that are permitted and part of the permanent scene. So if you have one temporary sign also for 60 days. That's quite a bit, in my opinion.
I'm just trying to visualize.
This is only for temporary, this is not for the regular sign.
That's correct, we're just talking temporary right now.
So this would be like Christmas sale. Christmas poinsettia, whatever.
And.
Temporary in addition to permanent.
Yes, yes. So that's right, so you're really adding to how much. Signage they would have during the Christmas season or whatever, if you're gonna add. You know, 60 days of an extra sign. So that's why you have to be very careful about allowing too many temporary signs. At Christmas time, you could just have a whole bunch of temporary signs all over the place.
Let's just go with two.
That's what I was.
A frame that you were concerned about, right, to, for people to get the eye to see it, and then they have one on the building.
I was thinking like with the octagon, you know, that's gonna reduce for them, you know, I guess some of their temporary signs, but two scenes.
Can this be any size? Can you have two long banners? Can you have, I mean.
But what, what do we say here?
Well, that's, okay, now he's coming up with how many square feet. So we go back to, we go back to size again.
Then. We're talking about signs that are less than four square feet in area.
Okay, okay, so, okay, so there we have it right there. On any on-premises sign. There's a total area of less than four square feet. Right there, you've got the answer right there. But you want to allow two of those? And also then their permanent signs, so we've got already the size right there. So two is a nice happy number, it's.
Even number.
Even number, you have one on this side, one on that side, I, you know, what, why not?
Of course, the signs on the window.
And then you have your little window signs too. You could still have a lot of sign clutter.
I, I mean, maybe this is like the, I'm hearing all of this and I'm thinking about all of the signs from the different places and what can be permitted and what can be, and like. I'm like, is there a more elegant solution? Is there just like?
There's no such.
Just like having this, and maybe this is out of turn completely, but it's like. Does it matter if they're temporary or permanent? Should just be like, we don't care what sign you put up, but this is just the limit for. Any business like based on size and that you like clean it up. It's like, if it's temporary, if it's on a window, if it's perfect, like. That it's just like you get a certain amount of signage, whether that goes. In a banner on the yard and a, but like you get this many square feet and it's based on the size of your building and like, we don't. Care what you do from there, but that's what everybody gets. Like.
I think that's fair.
Because there is something to this, like each one, and then you add this and you're like, okay, but then if they do these feathers and this thing and they're allowed this and that, what about their open sign? I don't know, it just feels like.
To school.
Yeah.
The number of signs that have limit to the square footage, right? That would make more sense. Yeah.
Like, we don't have to make a decision, they get to decide what their allowance does, that it's like you get. You know, 20% of your building face and then you can have up to 10% of whatever your building face is in. Things that go in the ground off the building or whatever, and it just feels like, granted, like I said, I wish this had occurred to me a couple of months ago. But do you know what I mean? I'm hearing all of this and it just feels really complicated where it feels like that there is a way of saying. Here's your allowance, do with it what you want, and that keeps it limited. That we don't have to like decide each one, sorry, so I don't know how.
That is, that makes sense. Well, that is how a lot of, a lot of newer towns work it that way. They don't allow temporary sign here, they don't allow any of that, none of that. And that's the time from, we don't, we don't allow any temporary signs, none.
Temporary, it could be not temporary, but it's like you just get this much space.
The problem is when you go into a master sign program, when you first set up your business, usually you want to maximize how much. Signage, permanent signage you can have, then you max it out, then you can't have any more rest of the year because you've maxed it out on your master plan.
Well, cool, that's what you, you did, like, you made the choice.
If you go that route, I'm fine with that too.
I mean, I'm just saying that that seems like. Easier to enforce in some ways and to say like, when people come in with the sign and saying like, hey, you've maxed out your signage, that means you don't get any temporary. Signs. That could be a choice you could make because you're like, I'm not gonna have tacky temporary signs or.
Yes.
Except that, even if it's, I don't know that I would feel right about limiting. Some, a, a business, well, you should have known that we were gonna make these changes, so you should have gotten a smaller permanent sign, because now you can't. Based on the count, the formula, you can't have temporary signs. And I don't, that doesn't seem fair. And the other thing is that. Just because it might make our job easier to, to, to try and harness all these ideas. I don't know that that still would really help the businesses. And so maybe we, I mean, I, because I think that there are certain situations where a temporary sign is appropriate. And I don't think we'd want to bind a business.
Well, for example, feather signs I think are temp, I think of them as temporary signs. And, you know, I mean, we use them a lot in every town uses feather signs all the time. So what do you want to consider them? Do you want to consider them temporary and part of their signage, master plan? I mean, where do they fit in?
I mean, I guess that's where I would say in this elegant solution that exists only in my head now, where it's like. You get this amount, yeah, this amount, I think you would have an allowance of like, this is what you get on your building and this is the amount that you get off your building if it's in. If, if it's off the building, as in you get to use that as a sandwich, you get to use that as a feather, you get to use that as a. Do you know what I mean? Any of those things that could be temporary or not, but like. That those would be your two allowances to do with what you wanted. Okay. And, and I just think that the allowance, we wouldn't make it so restrictive. That people have already like blown their budget, but that. While, because what is easier for us, I also think is easier for other people to understand and when they are in or out of regulation, like.
That's.
We are doing this thing that is creating something that is. Feels very hard and I think that oftentimes then the result is just like, well, screw it. Like, I'm just gonna put up my sign and see what comes.
Yeah.
Catch me if you can. Yeah, I mean, that's how I would feel a little to be like, what's going on here? Anyhow.
Uh, how do we want to proceed with that? What do you think?
So I, I think, well, from an enforcement perspective, right? What you're gonna have is, is no one's gonna measure percentages of signs, but you're going to easily be able to say like, hmm, that one feels wrong, right? Like that one feels like it's more and then the measuring happens. The other piece of that is you're talking about allowances for on the building and allowances for. Off the building, you could have like a 5% allowance for temporary signs too, and then that resolves those concerns there. So I think. It, it makes the enforcement. Easier and that you're sort of eyeballing things and you have a sense of when things are. Larger and then you, you have to measure it instead of like, okay, how many, you know, running through a bunch of lists. So, I mean, I'm not the code enforcement officer, but that's my.
Yeah.
Thought. You're presenting.
Okay, so. I like the idea of having so much, a percentage of the wall sign and then maybe. Off the wall sign. So you could have maybe a feather. Or a, you know, whatever, or a sandwich board or whatever. But I, I think we should allow, as you say, maybe 5%. Of their signage program could be that. Or whatever.
Or if, let's say someone is allowed X for their permanent sign and they only use half of X, can they then transfer the, some additional temporary sign? Get some.
So.
Yeah, transfer it over to the other.
I don't know, just.
And I'm sure that in this little town, I don't think anybody's gonna really care, you know, I mean, it just. The, the, the real concern in this town is just not allowing too much clutter and having people abuse so much, you know. and having people abuse so much, you know, a certain situation. And, you know, when I first moved here ten years ago, it, there was massive sign clutter to me. Because on the West Coast, they don't allow anything like what they allow here. It's just, it's all very precise, everything's small and minimal. And, you know, signage is the last, you just, you know, you just quietly put your sign up and that's it. There's none of this big. In a little tiny town, you'd never have an electron, a big electronic sign. You'd have maybe a little, like the one the school has and that would be it. But, um, we're pretty free here with our different types of signs and I'm okay with that here. It's the history of this town. But I think we have to be careful that we want to make it fair for people, but yet not make it so ugly and, you know, just too much, the sign takes away from the environment, which is also the bay and all that. Um, so we have to be environmentally sensitive, I think, as well. It's, it's, I mean, we have to, a balancing act here. We really do. It's, we've got, uh, people who come here to look at the bay. They're not, even though we do have a casino town. A casino town, which we have four, at least four casinos, I think maybe five, they're noted for their signage. They're noted for their flashing lights and their, you know, and their attractive, you know, bring, you know, come on in and let's play. And that's, uh, that's just the nature of a casino town. So we have to be cognizant of that. We can't just say, oh, you know, I got a little tiny nothing sign. Um, so I'm, you know, I'm okay with having, um, especially when there's holidays or there's something coming up that we need to identify. You have to bring out that temporary sign because it's a special event, whatever. Then you have, you can't just have what you had in your master plans, you know, when you started up. You've got to add that extra square footage or square inches or whatever it's going to be. I, I would like to say that any temporary sign within the sixty day limit, you could have an extra five percent of signage. Um, five percent for the, compared to the total amount of square footage of their, the face of their, of their building. Though I'd be how I'd look at it, but I, I know that, you know, let's just not even worry about it, but I think we have to identify something.
You're saying that would be on the building itself?
Well, the five percent would be the extra. So it'd be the extra, not the permanent stuff. It'd be the temporary signage. But, oh, if you want to put up a temporary sign up, yeah, I think probably might as well include the, yeah. If you want it on the building, I don't care.
So, so you don't have a sign, so you get the permanent plus the extra?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think to be realistic, I think we have to be that way. I think we have to be flexible. Because that's life in the, in the town where you've got, you know, a lot of exciting things happening. You've got, you know, a beer fest here or whatever happening there. You want to, you know, show people where things are at and where it's, you know, where we're, we don't want it to get too sloppy, but, um-
Be medium.
So then do we add a, add five percent to I and then create a three or, and then say total coverage between temporary and the other makes it twenty-five percent of total area? So that it's clear. Because if you're giving them five percent
Of additional.
Additional, and then it's twenty percent regular.
That's, has to do with the wind.
That's the window, right?
Trickier because you don't want to lock-
You don't want to close up the window.
A window.
Well, what do we have for the total wall? That, well, I mean, we have to probably look at what the wall.
So the other thing is you could just make window signs part of your overall, like whether it's in the window or on the wall, it's still part of whatever your percentage is.
Well, that's what it should be, really.
No window can be blocked more than twenty percent.
Right.
So that you keep that open.
Yeah, that has to be, yeah.
And you guys want to, I think this is what you want to see, this table. Where did it go?
Me, in this world, then, there's all sorts of stuff we can like, not, like, it all goes into that and we don't have to regulate then each little part of it.
Because we're just regulating the amount.
Why, why can't you block a whole?
Afton Security?
Yes, it, it has to do with code compliance. Has to do with code compliance.
Because if something's going on inside of a building, then the police can see inside of it and have an idea.
They want to have, yeah. That's-
I mean, there's a gun to someone's head, hostage.
My drapes pulled.
The police, police can't see it in there.
It's different.
Commercial's a little, they, yeah. And I know that it was about egress and ingress and ventilation and this and that.
You've got a window that doesn't move.
If you have a window that doesn't, however, can you cover it entirely? It, you know, I had to say it, but one of the things like in, in, on the West Coast, again, they don't allow you to cover any window. Not at all. You're not allowed to put any sign in any window at all. But you're not on the West Coast, so there's that. Yeah, I'm just saying, but there's a reason why. There's a reason why, because it, when you're on the inside, it's nice to have the light coming in. And when you're on the outside, it's nice to be able to look in. So to them, it's an aesthetic, you know? It's, it's pleasing to have signs on your window. Just kind of looks like, eh, you didn't do a, you know, it's kind of a cheap job of putting your signage up, just stack it on, you know, just put it on the window and put a piece of tape up there and you're done. So it's a matter of how things are presented and it's the aesthetics mostly. But yeah, I know. I mean, yeah, I, I know, we're used to window signs out here, so I'm good with that, too, whatever you guys want. So, okay, let's, let's conclude this.
I was just going to say, what you would do is, this is a chart further down, but you would basically, instead of number of signs, there would be a percentage.
Yes. Yes.
Instead of-
Yes. Why don't we go ahead and put a percentage? We, if that's okay with everybody else, how about if we do that percentage? Even though nobody's going to ever figure out a percentage, but you know, kind of gives us a way to-
Roughly have like, it's like you, you see when it's like, we're not going to be doing the math and the measurement unless it's like, you know, nobody's going to get to it unless it's at thirty-five percent or more probably before. Then, I mean, I guess the, there's then the concern. I'm just trying to play both sides in my own mind. If one business felt like, oh, you're picking on me because I have thirty-five percent, could there be issues where they're like out there trying to be like, well, look, they've got twenty-two percent. I just did the math. Like, I don't know. I'm just like, you know, stuff gets petty.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
But yeah. Okay, yeah.
Let's make this easy readable and easy enforceable.
Yeah. I mean, I'm very pro that, obviously.
What do you think would be the easiest to enforce, Sarah, on this one?
I feel, I feel like I'm making a decision for a different staff member. But I, I think just, I think if everything does consolidate down to percentages, then that will be easier to enforce than counting signs and measuring square footage for the, because this is, you know, if it's a thousand street foot of street footage, you get one sign, you get two. So percentage will probably be easier, I think. Um, and we could potentially do some like mockups that visually show the percentages so that that could either go in the ordinance itself or it could go in some accompaniment online so that there's, not only does staff kind of have a visual, but the, um, property owners have a visual as well.
I, I'm just curious, and this may be apparent to other people, but how is someone going to know necessarily how much the size of their structure?
So you actually want to base it on either the, like the, you don't want to base it on the square foot of the structure, you want to base it on the linear footage? Because that's easier. You can just grab a tape measure and measure that.
Okay.
I think that will be easier. I realize if you have a taller building, twenty percent looks different, but,
I mean, should it be a little bit, though, based on linear and stories then, like as a rough estimate? Do you know what I mean? Because like proportions and stuff. Because like-
It could be percentage per story.
You know what I mean? Because like the parking garage obviously is very different than, than everything in town.
You could say percentage per story.
Yeah. You know what I mean? Because that does feel like if you're a two-story building, if you're A1 antiques, you can have more because you have more space. And like, that doesn't contribute to the clutter as much as like if Tyler's-
They have two, two or three businesses in a-
Exactly, yeah.
As opposed to-
Yeah.
Well, in a complex, we don't want any temporary signs, do we? I mean, I guess McDonald's does have temporary signs, don't they? Yes, they do.
Are we talking about all signs or just-
We're talking about temp, we're talking about temporary right now, right?
No, we're kind of talking about, I think, all, and then what's like, all signs. And then you can use it for temporary or not, but we are going to give you an additional amount for temporary in case you-
Right, so it's, it's, and I, when I sent this, I had just reorganized it because that conversation had happened, but it really hadn't resolved. So, you know, we can look at something different next time that it theoretically will be shorter.
Okay. Let's go ahead and come up to some idea here. Or, or should we just work on it and come back next time with it? I, I want to kind of get this done, but do we have, do we want to come back or can we come up with something right now?
If, if you could come up with the percentages, I'll have to rework, I think I have to rework. Let me make sure I understand so that might, what I bring back to you. So what I'll be bringing back is sort of a list of the types of signs that are allowed. Real estate signs in its own piece. And then also eliminating a lot of these content-based pieces. And instead, talking about the number of the square footage of permanent signs, the square footage of temporary signs and the square, bare footage of signs, I guess, temp, permanent signs that are attached and detached and temporary signs that are attached and detached would be-
And that sounds great.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And that's what we're concluding right now. It sounds great. We were also going to talk to everybody about the holiday and seasonal decorations. And if we were going to have them in that sixty-day temporary thing, or we were going to allow that to be a year-round situat- I know we talked about it as being a, anything goes, but did you want that to be considered as a seasonal sixty-day thing or? You know, it's one of those things again. It's like having Halloween, do we want the skeleton up all year round and just put a different hat on them? Or what do we want to do?
That is your twenty percent. It's going towards skeleton.
Okay, then. There you have it. The skeleton, the skeleton would go through the twenty percent. I like that. Okay, there you go. The sandwich, the sandwich type A-frame is a separate thing where they have actual conditions on that one, I guess. Uh, not to see, exceeds certain height and all kinds of little things like that, but I think we're good on that. If you want to go to page fourteen. Some towns say we should have it weighted down when they put it up so it doesn't blow over and hit somebody and blah, blah, blah. So on page fourteen, you're talking about the that. I think the real estate signs, we've got that figured out. Anybody have anything different on the A-frame or are they okay with that? Looks like probably nobody's going to change that. And we've got the real estate.
I do think it's a good idea, maybe about the weighted down part. Because, especially with the big winds we can get here sometimes.
About being properly secured.
Properly secured. Okay, so can we put some language in about being properly secured with weights? So, you know, and also the other thing that people were saying is that they should go inside at night. So it should only be out on the sidewalk when the business is open. And I guess it should have light on it and it also should-
It does need light if it's only-
Well, unless you have a, unless you have a business that's open, you know, block or ten o'clock.
How are they going to run electricity to it? If it's an, if it's a sandwich sign on the thing and they don't have outside outlets, they're not going to be able to get lighting to it?
No, so, um-
Lit up things.
No, well, so the question is, do you only have it during? I mean, for safety's sake, do you only have it on a sidewalk during the daytime when there's light? People can see, pedestrians can see it. I mean, what does everybody think about that? And should they take it in at night when they're closed or? Because if it's on a sidewalk, does that become the town's property?
It's not supposed to be on the sidewalk.
It's not, but theoretically, you know, it's going to probably encroach on the sidewalk, which would then make it a town liability, right?
I'm not sure about that.
So- We're going to have a lot more in the future.
We do, we, there are A-frames that encroach on the sidewalk. Um, and that's an issue that I believe we're dealing with, but-
Oh, you already are dealing with that, too. Well, um, it's almost, I mean, right, I know there are a couple, but, so, so, I mean, do we have any businesses that have enough property so that the A-frame would not encroach on the sidewalk? Because I'm always thinking, most sidewalks go right up to most businesses.
Because you can put them in your parking lot.
Right. After the quarters over here. No sidewalks, so.
Yeah. Well, so if they put it into the roadway, I guess that's in the driveway, but that's- All right, so what else do you want to put in about that then as far as safeties? The sign must be properly secured and weighted or weighted and brought indoors when the business is closed in high-wind events.
That should probably be two sentences.
Yeah, I was going to say that probably needs to be broken. I think that adds a little bit more security there. Yeah, that's good. Open house, that looks good. Um, Ashley, I think.
If I might?
Yes.
A question about, um, open house signs, A. One sign may be placed on each street frontage and an additional three off-premise signs. Is that like, um, if it's a new development or something? I'm trying to think where there would be an off-premise sign.
Like if you're coming, if, uh, you're trying to direct somebody into the neighborhood and saying like, open house this way, right?
Let me, let me use Richfield Station. They put one right on two sixty. Then you go up the hill and there's one in the circle. Then you go like, and it's pointing you wherever in the neighborhood, because when you get to the circle, you have options. And then it gets closer to the street that it's on and then you have one in the yard.
Well, but like, I, for an HOA, I guess that would be ruled by the HOA, or maybe that's just kind of informal practice. But if you're not in an HOA, are people just putting them on, where would they actually?
Put them that isn't like somebody else's private property? I mean, I can imagine like back in my neighborhood that you might put it along like the Beach Elementary, like somewhere that's on the public property by the by the roadway that would be pointing you into my neighborhood. And then you might not be able to get four in, but that would, so they're, so basically
it's kind of trespass by sign on a public property where they don't belong anyway?
Or private property. I know that when my neighbors are selling their house, the signs are in the space between, like the space that is, uh, right-of-way. It's not technically my property. There's, people always put real estate signs there.
So first, what, ten feet in is right-of-way?
At my yard, but yes.
Um, okay, so it's seven thirty. I just want a few more, um, I think temporary signs, we've kind of got a feel for now. Do we think we can put something together?
I, I'm going to do another sort of reorganization. I think-
That's probably-
You're already not sorry.
Best-
I'm, like, I realized that when I sat down and reorganized this here. But I think the structure of temporary, general, allowed, not allowed, and then we're going to make it even more condensed with percentages and lists.
And then, um, we, um, then I was going to just show you that Annapolis, when they do their, um, prohibited signs, they have, as I say, just, just a list of words is all they're having for prohibited signs. You know, animated is one, billboards is another, so we could, if we could get down to that for prohibited, I think that would be kind of cool. And then we have another town that has, I think St. Michael's who does exempt signs the same kind of way, maybe if, you know, maybe a sentence or two, but. So the more consolidated we can get with some of this and then I wrote down some different layouts that we could have. We don't have time to do that because I want to get to our hen house. Our hens in the hen house situation here. But we do have different layouts that we can look at when we come back and figure that out.
Yes, I'm going to give you a different layout than what you have.
I won't even go through what we have then because it's going to be completely different anyway, so.
We'll say the electronic messaging center is probably going to stay how it is if you want to do that complicated sign.
Yeah. Which is interesting because, you know, some of the, none of these towns have nice little EMC section in them that like we have, so that's we're up to date, which is yay. Cool.
Okay. So not finished.
No, we're not all finished. So if anybody has any more concerns about temporary signage, let's let Ms. Franklin know now before she starts typing away. And otherwise, I'm going to conclude temporary signs and I want to move on to the household hens and I think we have a committee that's been working on this, so.
Okay, how about, how about this email from?
Yeah.
Mr. Peter. Wants to paint a mural on the outside wall of an empty.
She already addressed.
I, because I was thinking about that and looked back. That should not fall under signs by our definition. Like art is not, signs perform an important function that they communicate, identify, promote business, properties, businesses, services, residences, events or other matters of public interest.
That's not what a mural does. A mural.
Murals on the outside of the parking lot.
It depends, it depends if the mural has a symbol of the business, you know.
As he says, of crabs.
Well, if he's selling.
Crabs.
But if he's selling.
It's a residential place. It's right next door to me.
Well, he's.
It's a, it's this big black.
What is it?
The big exposed wall and he wants, I believe he said he wanted to decorate it, not open. I'm hoping a crab place.
You'd have to move.
You are in a business area. You could. Um, I think it could be considered a sign if it was like, you know, we have running, you know, where there's the guy paints whales and they had a whale mural. I mean, that's obviously what he did, but I'm not sure that this would be that he sell crabs. He sells crabs or, you know, whatever. I don't know, but it sounds like something that, you know, Ms. Franklin would have to deal with in her.
Well, isn't the question that are you allowed to decorate your house?
And.
Yeah.
That's his house.
Unless, unless you're violating the HOA rules.
Right.
I would think you could.
Yeah, I think here you could.
Paint it all up.
Yeah, put unicorns.
And I don't want to like definitively say without checking all parts of the code, but a sign has to have numbers, letters, words, models, banners, emblems, insignias, trademarks.
Trademark, trademark. A trademark can be a symbol.
Right, right, but only the part of the mural that has the words on it is going to be considered the sign under the.
Like you said, 20%. Like the mural could probably cover. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The mural could be 100%.
This is not an official decision on the part of the zoning administrator.
I make it, yes, we're not going to go over that and make a public policy right now.
I mean, they just did a mural down in North Beach. Have you seen it? It's beautiful.
Oh, it is. They can be beautiful, absolutely.
Right on the.
It's like with your metropolitan appliance where the new, the arcade is supposed to go in.
Right. Right, yeah. Okay, so we have a report from our household hens committee.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
I said that phrase to my father. He almost died. Hey, that you said household head sub. See, man. Yeah. Okay, so Chris and I met and Sarah was with us so that we could talk about like possible regulations to present to you. This is sort of where we have landed on this and then we can discuss like which parts of it you think yes or no, and then ideally we would come up with what then we would want the ordinance to look like, that it would get drafted and then we could vote on it at that point. Is that correct in my understanding? So. Big pieces of it are that we would want to limit the number of hens to four hens per single dwelling on a lot or a combination of lots due to the number of HOAs and lot coverage limitations for small lots. We, we would be in favor of not limiting it based on lot size if they can put in a chicken coop and run that fits within. The word that I'm looking for, I need setback requirements. So we would do like an eight-foot setback requirement if the lot was small, but you could go in eight feet and eight feet to get the coop size that you need because your lot is set up in such a way that we would allow that without restricting it since, since there are so many non-conforming lots. I mean, there aren't going to be that many lots that that would be.
That they would be allowed to put the coop in the front of the house?
Not in the front of the house. It would be our recommendations would be side or backyard, but not in front yards. Which, so that wasn't specifically in the first page, but the second one that I handed out today has more, so no minimum, no minimum lot size. But there would be an eight-foot setback allowed in rear or side yards only, not front yards. Coop requirements that they'd be fully enclosed and predator proof coop would be ventilated, dry, well, regularly cleaned. Hens may not roam free. Waste management. Composted on site or disposed of as yard waste. That there would also be additional planting requirements within the critical land area. I did want to kind of note because I feel like people get worried about chicken waste and I think it's really an important thing to be aware, like four hens produced about the same waste as one dog. And so we're not like regulating what people do with their dog waste unless there is a problem. And I feel like that feels like more in line with it to say like, if, if nobody is complaining, we're trusting people because that they are doing that and then it can be regulated. Because people do use chicken fertilizer that has like benefits in a way that dog waste certainly does not. There would be a simple registration fee. I mean, I would, no inspection unless complaint is filed would be one way to go. You could say that like that. I mean, again, I'm trying to make it as easy on the town as possible for it to happen and like not adding additional burdens to them because because them having to go out and inspect it beforehand. Whatever our fee is, again, it doesn't feel like it's necessarily going to cover that unless a neighbor is complaining. And then we would have enforcement over violations.
If, if you're saying that, then, and I understand that and I respect it. But at the same time, like owners must provide fresh water, clean feed and monitor health. How are we going to enforce that?
I would not have included that. That was in response to Cindy's questions. I don't feel like that's that. I don't actually think that that would necessarily be in code. I don't know what your thoughts are, Sarah.
So that wouldn't really be a zoning code. That would be town council adopting a piece of the code. And I think it's that you adopt that code so that if there is a problem, you can enforce it. Like if there's a complaint and there's no code that says that you can't leave your chickens starve and your neighbor's watching you leave your chickens starve, you want to have some, some code to follow through with it.
One thing I would suggest on here out of consideration, I think their neighbors should be informed on either side of them that they will be installing a chicken coop.
Informed?
Yeah.
But they have no say so. They can't object or. You'd probably never get them in it.
I mean, yeah, because if, if they had to get them to sign off on them, there's you know, a good bit that they probably wouldn't sign off, but just out of courtesy. Say, hey, just want to let you know I'm installing a chicken coop and I'll have four chickens.
Again, I guess that, so then if they don't inform neighbors, but they've gotten a permit. Then what?
So you're saying they do have to get a permit?
This, that, in that they, there would be a registration fee, that they've come and they've registered. And they would be building something on their lot or a chicken coop means you are using up some of your impervious surface area. So if you are putting a structure, you're going to have to have a permit for that. But I, but it just seems to me like, would you no longer be permitted or would your registration be revoked because a neighbor says they didn't inform me? That feels, that feels to me like a courteous step, but not necessarily like an easily.
I, I guess I could liken it to if, if someone's getting a dog. You don't inform your neighbor, even though it might, you know.
It's going to affect your neighbor.
Yeah.
I don't see that helping. I, I see that as a possible difficulty or.
Everybody's going to say no.
You don't, well, typically you don't, you, the chicken run is in, the chickens are in a fenced area and typically.
Foxes are.
But the, I mean.
And, and the neighbors are there. You have, have a, I mean, you have the coop, but also have the fenced in yard. That would give you double protection, I guess.
I mean, most people's fences are not predator-proof. Because it's such like a different. Well, because you had mentioned it in relationship to foxes.
So the run would have to be totally enclosed as well.
You say enclosed, are you talking about totally enclosed?
A coop is totally enclosed. A run is covered because that helps prevent spread. It's covered, but it's open.
And if you don't cover the run, foxes and other things will get it or codies will get in there or, or even hawks will get in there. So it has to be covered, it has to be covered altogether. There were other things that people were saying in other cities, they put in that they're not allowed to slaughter chickens. Because some people will have forests slaughter them at their house and then get more, you know, so no slaughtering allowed in the town. You got to have all of your food proof, pest-proofed so that you don't have just feed sitting in an open bag so that other animals are attracted and, you know, vermin's come by. And then the one town was suggesting that you have movable coops so that you keep moving around where it is so that you can clean underneath. You don't, you know, the the waste doesn't encourage any bacteria growth.
That, lots of times people want to do that, but also due to limited lot sizes, you're not going to have necessarily. And it is harder to make those structures as predator-proof when you're trying to, because a lot of times you're trying to put like chicken wire under into the ground so that things can't go underneath. So I feel like that's a, that would be a pretty hard thing to regulate. So we were saying that it would not be allowed in the town commercial center. The, there would be a question like some of these areas, kind of like where Jan lives, right? We were trying to identify the areas where there is mixed commercial residential and how we feel about that, if that wants to be off the table, that residential, people living in a residential commercial area cannot have them. But strictly commercial properties would not.
What is the odor component of all of this? Do chicken coops smell? Do they?
If you don't clean them, they can. That's why.
That's a problem. I think, I think, I think the the big smells of what everyone's thinking is these mass, mass farms for chickens. And also there's not going to be these massive number of people. It's a pretty big endeavor to build a coop, to put it in your yard. So this is, this is more the accessibility to the people of the town to be able to have this option.
Right, I just wondered. I mean, I know they, those 3,000-foot buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Are terrible, but I didn't know if you had four chickens, if that was an issue because I don't know doodly squat about chickens.
I think there is a smell. People should be taking care of that and it is the kind of thing that you could and, you know, because it, it would say that they need to be maintained and if a neighbor complained, then that's the kind of thing that would violate. That would, you know.
When you're registering at your neighbor's permission.
Yeah. I mean, again, we're going back to you can get a dog without asking your neighbor's permission. You, if it's, it's, yeah, bunnies, that there's other things.
Bring another child.
A child. Right, but it is a thing that barks and has smelly excrement and can be not taken care of.
So, so you don't care what the neighbors.
No.
Loved it. Delivery.
Yeah.
So, okay, so when you say an eight, eight-foot side yard setback, is that from the property line?
Property line needs to be back from eight feet from all property lines.
Because my property line literally goes up to a foot to my neighbor's house. Which is odd, but there are a lot of lots like that in Tennessee Beach and mine is one of them. So literally I could put my chickens right underneath my neighbor's window or, you know, I mean, you know, pretty close, but I think we might have to come up with some other idea of how, how far away from the closest window or building or instead of a setback because of our crazy lots here, you know, they're just crazy here.
I was going to say you have a non, you have non-conforming setbacks. So what you would do here is to say that chicken coops cannot that they have to conform with setbacks regardless of where they are. There's no exceptions.
He's saying, I think, because her prop, because her neighbor's house is right on the property line, the coop improper setback in her yard would only be nine feet from her neighbor's house.
All my, all the houses on my street are ba, are basically up to the next person's house. It's very strange.
Oh, right, right, you're.
We're up, you know, so the campground is kind of weird and, you know.
So is there a something that then says has to be eight-foot setback and a minimum of 15 feet from the nearest from a neighbor, from anybody else's residence other than your own.
Yeah, at least.
But they're in a townhouse, they wouldn't be able to do it.
Right.
HOA wouldn't allow.
It's not covered that, I mean, this we were discussing, we're trying to make it as possible as we could, given the fact that like it's already going to be. I mean, what percentage of the town lives in HOAs already? Like, and so they're already all getting knocked out of it. So who are we, then how much can we make accessible beyond that?
A concept of how many households would potentially be appropriate for?
No.
Yeah, we just, we didn't actually calculated it. We just sort of roughly, we roughly eyeballed.
And what was the rough eyeball result?
It was more kind of a percentage.
Yeah.
So really it would allow most of your non-HOA lots to do something. But there are some non-HOA lots, I'm thinking about B Street. Right, where you're, you're not going to be able to and you're not going to want to give up your lot coverage probably. You'd have to like take out your sunroom to put in.
That we're talking about a limit, pretty self-limiting.
You also have to indicate it has to be a heated coop. It's going to be outside.
It's got to be heated.
Oh, well, chickens really, you know, they don't do well and when it, you know, 30 degrees, you have to.
If they're in a house, if they have a chicken coop in a house, they're good.
Coop is, yeah, maybe, maybe.
They don't require heated dog houses, do we?
No, but birds. Right, that's true. No, that's true.
Dogs have.
No, chickens can, yeah, chickens can survive.
Yeah, you don't have to heat chicken coops.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it myself. I mean, I don't know if anybody, what does everybody think here? Let's start, let's start going down the. Let's start, let's start going down, uh, the interior. Commissioner Han, what are your thoughts about this? And if you wanted to add any conditions, what would your conditions be beyond what they already have?
I am okay with it. The enforcement I would like changed. I, I mean, first time warning, I'm okay with that. The second time, a correction order, no. If we've already given you a warning, the second time, I want a hundred dollar fine. Third time, let's hit them with five hundred.
Oh.
There goes the egg savings.
Yeah. I mean, you're not saving anything on.
You're not, it's gonna cost you very expensive.
Choosing that they like want this as a pet, as a thing, it's not like.
Well, or the organic, you know, things like that. But at the same time, like, if you have to keep coming out.
Yeah, no, I think that's a totally.
I mean, because.
And you hope that people could, that go through this. You know, gonna be diligent.
Yeah. And if there are people that aren't, then they probably haven't come to register it, which is already, do you know what I mean? Like if they.
And become a parent who's good reason.
Yeah.
Is there money involved with your registration or is that?
I mean, I said, simple registration required fee, T E B D, like, if you want to say, to come into the town and that they're gonna be bothered by it at all, you gotta pay twenty-five dollars or something just to register your chickens. We can, we don't have to.
What about the existing places? I, if you go on next door, there are multiple, but, you know, that, and I know on my street, there's one. Do they need to come in and register?
Have chickens?
Yeah.
Well, yes.
I mean, but, well, they ain't legal, but also.
I know that, but I'm saying.
If they want, if they want to be legal and not get hit with these violations, then yes.
I think it all really comes down to, and I hate to say it, is where's our code enforcement in the town? Because they should already flag them and they already should have done something about that.
I mean, it depends.
This is typically an animal control issue. It's not usually a town, you know, for animals. For animals, it's not usually a town issue, but in this situation, we're gonna make it a town issue.
Well, it's also, it's also zoning violation because they didn't apply for a permit to build a chicken coop, right?
Right, well, you know.
But if it's in, if it's in the backyard and it can't be seen and it can't be heard, you know, the, it's it's not really that the code enforcement officer can be walking on people's property to go see what's going on everywhere. So sometimes, yes. Yes, I'm not saying you don't need a, a chicken license. I'm just saying that it, these chickens that exist, it's entirely possible that either the code enforcement officer doesn't know, or the code enforcement officer might sort of know, but not be able to visually enforce it without entering private property. I don't know the answer to that.
So, uh, Commissioner Han, you're good with it, except that you want stricter enforcement regulations. Okay. Mr., uh, Commissioner Smith, what are your thoughts?
I'm also for it. Um, I think the, I like the way that this is written because it's open for interpretation for, um, when it does get sent up to town, to, to the council, and if it, if it opens up to the community, we can hear what, the, any sort of correction that I think we've laid out the just baseline model of it being available to the most amount of people right now. And if any sort of correction can be made, that's, that's fantastic. But I think this is a, this is a, it's a good start and, uh, definitely for it.
Do you think we need to add any more, no more, no more conditions then? You don't wanna add, um, I mean, I think you've got pretty much, you know, must be fully enclosed, part of proof, you know, I think you've got a lot of the conditions right there.
I, I do like the enforcement. If, 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 you know, if this is something that we're gonna be offering, like, that's, that's definitely something that we could talk about if you wanted to increase it or if you wanted to make it, you know.
Okay, so enforcement regulations. Okay, Commissioner Grace, what are your thoughts about this?
I generally like it. I think it's a great thing for people to do. Just curious, so the eight foot, the setback?
Yeah.
Was that what you found in other areas? Is that considered like the appropriate? Is that the minimum?
Uh, it changes drastically, uh, like in some cities and towns, they have five foot. And then other places like Rockville, I think it's a twenty or twenty-five foot. Those are places that ha- tend to have much larger lot sizes, so you have the option. Um, so we were trying to go with something that felt like it actually would allow for some lots to do it, but like, what could be? You know, if you're, if you're eight feet off from a house, uh, but I do, the point that, uh, Cindy made, we could have the regulation around how far it has to be from another building. That would be, um,
you know, sort of one of those things like not in my backyard, like, you know, the concept sounds great. But I wouldn't want, just like I wouldn't wanna s- smell, I was at the Humane Society today, like, if I lived right to that, I might not wanna smell certain smells. And that would be, I'm also various, sensitive to smells myself. So that would be my issue, is that kind of the, that, the odor. And I don't know what the odor would be like, but I just wanna make sure that, you, you could satisfy someone who wants chickens and someone who doesn't want the smell from the chickens.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Reckay, what are your thoughts?
Oh, as I'm looking under animal health, did we decide that, um, providing fresh water and clean feed is something that we want to get into, or should it just be assumed?
I feel like it's assumed because it's, I mean, we're not making any sort of other case for any other animal that's, you know, that's.
Well, and that's also outside of the purview of planning and zoning, so that would come off of ours, but maybe goes into our recommendation to the, to an ordinance that's being passed by town council. Correct?
Yeah, I think what I would do is draft an ordinance, but also draft a memo to town council to, to, to address, here are the topics that were of concern that are outside of the zoning regulations for you to consider. I think you wouldn't wanna send just the ordinance to them.
Gotcha.
What happens if an HOA decides that, you know what, we want chickens? And now all of a sudden, you have mixed, you have single family and you have the townhouses. This is silent on that to a certain extent.
Well, I don't know how most townhouse lots would allow for it based on their impervious coverage requirements and setbacks in their backyard. And if we are then also having a requirement between how far your coop could be from another house, I feel like those townhouses still wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to meet those requirements.
Single families might.
Yeah, the single families could, and like, actually, in lots of the HOAs, their yards, they have bigger lots and kind of make more sense for them than others. But the townhouses wouldn't really ever be, uh.
I don't think physically I could see a situation where.
Well, a, a lot of the townhouses already have fenced in backyards, so. That's why I'm just thinking they could ease, I mean, their, their yard a butts to the next door neighbors, but they're already fenced in. So.
I mean, I'm. I feel like they do have that, but how much of their, they tend to have, they have smaller yards and they're already in a special, like, they can cover more of their lot size. Anyway, like, they frequently can't get decks and things because it's covering their impervious, so I feel like between any number of factors, I can't imagine the yard that would be able to still be potentially fifteen feet from another house, if that's what we add to the code, eight feet from all property lines, and you have enough space in your yard for this.
Right, and that's like an additional requirement that the HOA can set forth, right? Like, that's, that's something that.
You don't have to.
And I, I, oh, sure, it thinks, but what about yourself?
I think, uh, neighbors have to.
I think, yeah.
One consideration, what if my neighbor grants approval and then they move? And now I already have a lot.
I mean, when you're first, first putting it in, under the neighbor's bedroom window, yeah, yeah, I mean, put a, put a eyes limitation, you have eight feet, is that eight feet to the neighbor's house too?
Well, we were saying we would add, it has to be a certain amount from another house, but it could be, it would probably be up to fifteen feet away.
I would think, i- if it's within fifteen. But there is a, a distance that where you wouldn't care.
Alright, so you're, so you're saying now if it's fifteen feet, you would not have to get approval?
Oh, I said fifteen feet you would. I'm, I'm, I haven't come up with a, a number.
Oh, okay.
But I would.
Me, I guess, uh.
Hundred feet.
That's half the properties in.
But there's, uh, the one fellow here that's, and so note says, he's, he's on an acre of land. So he's got, he's got.
So are definitely able to have chickens. And we definitely should create something, if nothing else, for those guys. But I, I was just trying to figure out my own property.
I don't know that, I mean, your neighbor may be within fifteen feet of you and they say, fine. But you need the neighbor's permission.
I don't know that you need the neighbor's permission because I don't think a neighbor should be able to stop you from what, doing what you wanna do on your own property. I think out of courtesy and consideration, you just let them know, listen, I'm putting, I'm getting four hens.
You can move.
And I'm putting in the backyard. Here's my realtor's card.
That's, I mean, we disagree. Neighbor needs, needs to grant permission.
But like they said, you don't get permission when you're getting a dog, and a dog is a lot noisier than four hens.
Dog isn't out all night.
Yeah, that's. Chickens make a lot less noise than a dog. A chicken while laying an eggs, decibel, is it about ninety? Which is normal conversational level, and that is while they're laying eggs. So it isn't the same sound.
So what do you do for the noise ordinance between ten PM at night and what is it?
Well, I'm saying it's conversational, though. Chickens do sleep.
They do sleep, actually.
And you don't, uh, but like, it's decibel level from the research I was saying, is, tends to be at around ninety while laying eggs. So you would be able to hear them, like you'd hear your neighbors. Um, but it's not, I mean, it's not as loud, loud as a dog barking. And it doesn't happen at night typically, unless they're getting eaten.
But you follow the rules.
Unless the fox gets in.
Cause that fox outside my window definitely is not following in voice ordinances this spring.
Well, it's that and depending on what type of dog you have.
Yeah.
It's a hunting dog, bird dog, and it's a neighbor, that dog will probably be very aggressive to get those chickens.
So if we came up with a setback in placement that really made a little more sense, um, to at least my street, um, I could see my neighbor across the street getting them and putting them right up against your neighbor's, you, you know, house.
Back to his house.
I'm just saying, I, I mean, you know, I, I, we have to be cognizant of the fact that side yards could be a challenge because that's where we have all the ability to make our neighbors very unhappy, um, because we have no fencing on the side yards a lot of times, um, there could be smells, you know, there is an ammonia smell where you've got a, a concentration of, of their, their chicken poop, you might say. So if we were going to change the, let's just say we just made it, could we just make it backyard? Unless you don't have a neighbor on your side. I mean, maybe we could make it real specific. If there's nobody on the side, you can have it on your side yard, but then who would care if you, you know, who would even complain?
I mean, it, um, seems to me, if it's a certain number of feet from the other house, does it matter if it's side or back?
No, yeah, I think if there's a set, if there's a setback from the property line, and then there's also a setback from the dwelling, the actual, the actual home itself, like you're, like you're talking about.
Yeah.
If you wanna make that further back, it's perfectly understandable. And it prevents you from having it in the side yard then.
Yeah, right, right.
Depending on what your lot configuration, because so many of the yard, I feel like there are lots of people in the beach houses where like, they bought the lot next to them because we barely have front and back yards. And so like, you might want to use that because that would have been like a lot.
Would we, would we like to direct our wonderful hired planner to come up with a ordinance for us to? Being that you do raise chickens, you would probably be good at this.
Right, so I can prepare and the ord- like, an ordinance and a memo based on all this great information and the conversation that I've been taking notes on, and provide that for next.
And I think, why don't you come up with the idea of how much of a setback, if you think it, you know, considering we've got those weird lots up there? You have an idea of how far away.
I mean, I, I honestly think what we've discussed tonight is probably good, but I will look into it a little bit more.
Yeah. And, uh, is that okay with the majority of us that we go ahead and, and direct her to do that? Is that okay with the major? I know that we have a couple those here, but.
Didn't say no.
I'm on the fence.
You know, but if we look at her ordinance and it looks really, you know.
Look at the ordinance, it's of impolice, you have to inform the neighbors. And, you know. Now, now, if, if informing the neighbors is enough to drop this idea, you're saying the neighbors don't want it. You're saying the neighbors wouldn't accept it. And I, I don't think that's true. I think some neighbors would say, fine.
If you can give me the eggs, I'll take the chicken. Yeah, of course, you know, they might get some eggs out of the deal.
I think though philosophically to me, it has to do with, if we are saying that this is a thing that you are allowed to do on your property, my neighbor and my relationship with that person, which may or may not have anything to do with chickens, should not be. Yeah, it should not be a deterrent to whether or not I can do something. If we think that is legally allowed to happen on a yard, then the whims of somebody else should not be a factor in that. So that, from a philosophical point of view, that's where I stand on it.
It's like you're really, you're trying to balance really two competing interests, and it's not easy because I understand what Mr. Brown is saying.
Yeah.
And at the same, because I, I don't know how I would feel about it until it actually happened, let's say. You know, I wouldn't know what.
You know, the, the neighbor could negotiate where it goes on the, on the yard. You could, uh, you know, have, have some agreement. But you don't want them talking to the neighbor.
No, I just don't think that the neighbor should get to determine what they do on their yard. If it is something that we say people should legally be allowed to do this, I, I think that that is then my property to determine where I want that.
I got it, I, I hear you.
So just where I'm coming from, in our HOA, if we're having something done, we have a form we have to take to each neighbor. They have to sign off that they're aware of it, and we have to submit it to the art committee before we can get approval to do it.
What committee?
The ar- the architectural committee.
Okay, okay.
So would it be then like a requirement when you get the permit to say, I had, that you would just sign off to say, I have informed my neighbors as a part of like getting the, registering their chicken?
We're not saying in here that, we're just saying you have to inform the neighbors. We're not saying you have to put it in writing or anything else like that. But if something comes up in the future, you can say, look, I informed my neighbor out of common courtesy that I was doing this because if you're building a coop, then that means you're gonna have people going in your backyard, building a coop and things like that, right? And it's gotta be permitted. So for me, it's just common courtesy.
I would think it, it would need to be signed or something because, uh, two weeks later, they changed their mind and you.
It, it doesn't matter, they don't have.
Gotten an agreement.
They don't, it doesn't matter because they don't have a right to tell, they don't have a right. They don't, it doesn't matter because they don't have a right to tell, they don't have a right to tell you what you can do in your own yard. Mine is a courtesy of saying, hey, I'm putting a chicken coop in my backyard. I just wanted to let you know, you're going to be seeing people coming in while it's being built.
We spend, we spend years here telling people what they can do in their yard.
That's, that's what we do. So.
It's not lost on me. Saying that my neighbors, I should not have any right to say, my neighbors, oh, you're putting that there and I don't want it there, so you can't do it.
But you just said in the HOA, you have to get your neighbors approved.
You don't, not everyone lives in HOA though.
There, you're, you're taking a form to your neighbor, selling them that you're doing this basically, and you're informing them that you're doing it. Not getting necessarily their approval that you're doing it, but you're informing them that you're having this.
Want it, what happened?
Yeah, I, should there be an objection period or just like a?
It doesn't matter. You just, I mean, for me traveling for work. I know that if my neighbor wanted to do something and they've come to my house twice and I'm traveling. They would probably just put on there, try this date and this date and resident wasn't.
Service. And then my neighbor is a renter, so do I have to go to the owner who's out of the area or how do we do that? So there's that.
Well, the, I, I think what we're talking about is that if you go to your neighbor, you are raising an issue that has the potential. Of being divisive. I mean, I grew up Bethesda, I, you know, I wouldn't, that's why I asked the question about chickens and if they smell, I mean, I have no idea. So you go to your next door neighbor, you say, hey, I'm doing this. If somebody came to my house, that would just create a, a bunch of questions in my mind. That it might be nice to do, but now you told them you're going to do something and they don't know what the impact is or isn't.
Right, you don't know the impact.
Also, I would, you keep saying the word common courtesy and I just don't think we can legislate common courtesy. Like that is a courtesy and we should do it like potentially, but to me, yeah, that's what, that's my only hesitation. Like I don't, I don't mind that being included, but it just feels like not easily enforceable. And so I don't tend to like to add stipulations that don't feel like an easily enforceable thing with the plan.
I mean, unless, unless you have to notify them and they've signed that they've been notified and that's attached to the permit.
Yeah.
That could be a condition of a permit.
Yeah, we can do that.
It says owners must provide fresh water and clean feed.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, that was, I, yeah, I don't necessarily think that that, and again, because that wouldn't go into the permitting. From us, but that would go into the memo from town so that ta, the town could do that if there was issues with the chicken, that there would be something to. If somebody complained, then you would have ability to say they aren't giving that chicken. Water feed, it's not cleaned.
I know this might be a little unusual, but I mean, I would imagine that there are like training videos or something where you could see. For those of us that maybe don't know, if there's anything out there that would show, Jan would show me, this is what it would look like. On this size lot and maybe there could be, I don't know if there's anything where, you know, neighbors talk about the impact or that it was, you know, the experience that might.
The big problem is you don't know how somebody's going to take care of theirs. And it's really about keeping that pen clean, keeping that.
Yeah, because bacteria, I mean, it builds up, you're going to have.
Biggest problem right there. And not every owner notices it the way a neighbor would, especially with the way wind would blow, whatever. Um, and I would get used to it as an owner, whereas my next door neighbor wouldn't be used to that, you know, that hen smell. Um, but I think if we let, um, Sarah come benefit with something. Might put enough stuff in here that it might be more palatable. Um, to some other people. Like a chicken.
And also it is like, this is something we're kind of kicking down the road to say, here's a thing and town council. And it would be interesting to see like if, if people are coming out left, right and center and saying, we don't want this, we don't want this. Cause there will be a public hearing, I think like we can present a thing that we're like, this seems. In line with what we're hearing, if you've seen the Facebook post about it, there is a lot of support for this, that people are talking about it. Um, and there has been a desire for it, but if you see the opposite when a hearing, then we say this isn't what the town wants.
So I have random or something or.
Do you have a ballot?
How do we enforce it if they don't pick up the eggs and eat the eggs and they let the chicks chick and then they have more?
Then they have more than four and you enforce it.
Well, we're.
You need a rooster.
You need a rooster.
Oh, yeah. Good point.
Yeah, better point, yeah.
Because so that, the name was, I'm definitely going to get that.
So thank you for that.
Yeah. And we'll have a video of Dr. Sald, okay?
Slaughtering, no, yeah.
He turns red about it too. I mean, I hear you.
I love dogs, but I don't know how I would feel.
Then, then you work it out.
Or not.
Or not.
Yeah.
So I think a lot of the concerns about smells and hair taking, those are issues you have with. Anything in the neighborhood, you know, you have people who let their trash pile up and don't maintain their house. And this becomes a code issue. And I think the people who are going through this process and getting this permitting aren't the people. Who, you, you're not going to be able to get a permit if you have code violations, that could be in there too. Like if you have existing code violations, you cannot get a permit to keep.
I mean, as part of the permitting. Is it possible that they have to put a plaque and where are they going to put it on their plaque?
That's part of the zoning process, so.
Because you have to be building something, so you.
Well, I'm just thinking. Depending on.
Well, the interesting thing is you don't need to have one for a doghouse if we're going to put a doghouse in or a dog area.
Right, but dogs are so common.
Yeah.
And we're really talking about people like Larry perhaps, or people like me that I don't know what to expect. That's the, that's the bottom line, it's the unknown, are they gonna?
I was thinking a video could help, you know.
Cause I don't, I know nothing.
Right.
I wonder if there's like some, it's probably something on YouTube we could watch. You know, at least give us an idea as to what to expect.
Or we could take a video to every house that you are announcing.
Yeah.
That you're going to have a chicken.
You have to get the neighbors.
That is.
Then they're really.
Yeah.
It's, it's fear of the unknown, guys, that's, that's the bottom line, those of us who don't know a cotton. Chicken, chickens.
Chickens.
Yeah.
I've had, my family's had chickens, so.
Sarah, do you have a, enough to go on here as far as conditions?
It's going to be everything. Keep doing one and one, but I think you've got enough. One thing though, because you had asked, you had said at some point and I was like, or maybe Mary Sue, we're talking like, oh, it would be interesting if you had. Information about towns that they had passed it and then how people felt about it. And obviously that is not research that we have, like we don't have the resources to figure that out. But I was trying to see generally how it's been received in communities. And one of the things that would seem like an indicator that it is going well is people very rarely go back on these. Like people, when they are introduced to towns. It seems like it would be an indication that people were unhappy with it and you were getting lots of complaints and it was bothering lots of people. If then these things in the next election cycle were repealed and you don't really see that. And so I don't know if that is any, if that, if that brings any comfort and maybe it doesn't, but do you know what I mean? If they were, if people were coming in and like.
Most of the towns I looked at had a lot bigger clearance, had a lot bigger setback than where we're.
And that might be.
One of the smallest setbacks I've seen for chickens, but.
I mean, there are places, but we just weren't bringing them up, like Baltimore City allows them and.
Baltimore City does allow them, yes, they do.
Smaller lots.
They do.
I was going to say you're leaving yourself wide.
I know.
While we don't for there, we appreciate the effort.
I also, I mean, I think Baltimore doesn't get nearly enough credit, so we are going to be, there is another place where we disagree that I'm like, yeah, I think. It's unbiased against that place that.
That great museums.
Yeah.
I think DC, DC allows them too, now that I think about it. So I know, I think they, I mean, there are some small areas.
There are lots of cities have, that have.
Yeah, they did.
That have, it's become a lot more common and those just weren't ones to bring up because I. Suspect it's sort of that reaction around it, so we were using other places, but they are, are places that use far more. Um, like liberal.
Or more restrictions.
Far, have a far more liberal restrictions. Yeah.
We are going to tidy this one up and just, uh, just one more time, you're going to then bring back next month, a little, uh, something for us to look at. On and, uh. Conditions perhaps. Uh, the next thing we want to, the last thing I want to do is I want to have some council member or some, I'm not council, but, uh, commissioner member comments. I have one comment and that is that next month, we're going to be starting back on our. June election of officers. So if anybody here wants to do this job, please all come, you know, come and let me know. Um, so that we can have an election next month. Um. And yeah, there's that. So let's start down at Commissioner Hahn, anything you would like to share?
No, no comment.
I'm good today. Thank you.
Commissioner Grisman, what do you say?
Uh, believe it or not, nothing.
Nothing, do they? Ms. Reckay?
No, I don't have a comment on anything else.
Okay, Ms. Weaver? No comment?
Um. You did receive these emails that Sharon got, uh, one from, uh. Ms. Kratu, uh, which is just.
Read those out loud last month. Those were last month. Yes, and she had him in the minutes too, so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for reminding us.
What was I saying?
Okay, so, um, is there anything else I'm thinking about for, um, next month, uh, Sarah, that we have to bring up? Oh, um, so once we tidy up the chickens and get a little bit more, we'll probably want to have our, I would hope our public hearing. Do you think we can do it next month? Are we that far along or do we want to wait another month?
Public hearing.
And the signs?
Signs.
Oh.
So I feel like.
We still need another, at least another.
Yeah, because.
We're not there yet.
Sizes, it changes, but I think.
Start on.
I know we want to, you, we want to get to coastal resiliency is where you're going. I think once we have this public hearing scheduled for the sign ordinance, then we can add coastal resiliency because. Theoretically, based on the turnout of your public hearing. It will depend, determine how much more time you need to spend on.
Much work we have to do.
Since you haven't had a lot of participation to this point, it seems like it might be pretty quick with signs after the public hearing, I could be wrong. Um, and then you would be able to do backyard chickens and start to take a look.
Should be doing resiliency at the same time?
We can start.
I think because it's this, leads into this overlay and a lot of changes. But it's, I think coastal resiliency is going to be a long. Process, it's going to take time because there's a lot of different.
Hearing.
Yes.
So maybe at the hearing, it's like sort of here's all the pieces we're going to have to touch, so an overview of it, so we get started. But it's, it's not a, you know, a simple. So.
Right.
Yeah.
You have a question? Oh. I also propose, I am out of town for work and play the next two meetings. So if we could maybe pause, that would give you more time to talk about signs and that we could just pause on chickens until August.
In July. So you're gone, you're gone for our June and July.
Are we recessing in August?
No.
That's what I was going to ask you next, who's going to be here in August? Do we want to recess in August? What do we want to do in August? Last, last year we did a, an off August because town council's off on August, so I thought, well, what do you want to do in August? Um, I will be in town, you will be in town. Okay, then let's, we've got so much work to do, let's go ahead and do August. Anybody else out for June and July that we know of right now besides?
Nothing right now.
Okay, good, so let's hold off then on the household hens until August.
You don't need that draft until August.
Yeah, we don't need that because she's going to be gone until August and of course we need her here, so, uh, August is when we need that. Okay, very good, um, I would like to have a motion to.
Introduce.
Are there any concerns or reasons to not, okay, all in favor? Okay, it's all done, we're done here. Thank you very much for attending our meeting.
All these.
Good night.
Okay, so my, my mom has, I'll wait.